Good morning. It is Tuesday, July 6, 2021, and I will call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you are able and join us in stating the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
The move is seconded.
Merkin?
Aye.
Beadle?
Aye.
Haddens? Aye. Next, we'll move on to public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Please, if you are on Zoom, you can unmute yourself clicking star nine or raise your hand, or if you're in the public meeting room, just come forward if you'd like to make any comments. And we're not seeing any. We'll wait a few more seconds. Sometimes I know Zoom can take a little bit. All right, not seeing that, so we will close public comment number one, and we'll move on to our 2021 insurance review with Steve Goodhue and Susan Hushur, right?
Yeah. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for placing us on the agenda this morning, and thank you for giving us an opportunity to review through July 1, 2021, '22, insurance renewals. Lisa mentioned, I'm Steve Goodhue at Naptidesco Insurance, and I'm joined by Susan Hushur from our office as well. Presentation is up on the screen, or should be up on the screen. If not, Bryce is going to put it up there and going to drive, and I thought I'd start by just walking through a few slides that speak to some trends, some very positive trends for the county that we always like to talk about when we're here. This first slide references your number of paid work comp claims over the past five years, and you certainly may have other claims that are filed, but this is only paid work comp claims. And historically, this county has averaged, and as you can see from the 16 to 18 timeframe, about 18 to 20 claims a year. Last year was a great year. It was only, you only had 10 claims, and some of that was maybe a function of the current COVID environment, but nevertheless, it's a 50% decrease, and it's a really, really nice positive trend. You'll see when we go to the next slide here in a minute that when you did have higher claim count, 18 to 20 claims, that did drive a few more paid claims. So next slide, Bryce, if you would. Here's your incurred losses by year, and again, you'll see a little bit of activity in terms of payments, medical payments, could be indemnity payments in that 16, 17, 17, 18 year, and then really started to see a nice decline in 18, 19, 19, 20, and then lowest number you've had in five years, this past year, which just concluded on June 30th, $8,500 in claims that were paid out, about $11,700 that are in reserve. Those are dollars that are set aside, waiting to be paid on medical payments, or maybe some determination of medical payments. And Susan just reminded me this morning that a couple of those claims have already been closed out, so it may not even be 11,000 in reserve. So a really terrific year in that regard, and that kind of leads us to the next slide, which is your experience mod. And just a reminder, this is a representative factor of your safety record, and it looks like historical losses, and you do a computation, we do a calculation, or the carrier does, looking at anticipated losses divided by historical losses, and you'll see that your experience mod is .66. The baseline is 1.00, and where we see a lot of, a lot of our clients at, and your .66, which is just absolutely terrific. You've been a high of .76, which is really quite good as well, but the fact that we're at .66 is really good. Your low mod goes back several years ago to when the payroll, the community life payroll was on, on the books, if you will, and that payroll has a, has a calculation factor, and I think maybe you were .59 at that time, but we always like to ask, where does the county stack up in relationship to other cities and counties across the state? And you are in the top five cities and counties across the state that are insured with ICAP. So it's a real tribute to, to this board and, and to your risk management, safety practices, and certainly the safety committee. So really, really impressive figure, and, and that results, as you'll see when we get to the very last slide, that results in a 34% discount on your work comp premiums. So we'll go to the next slide. Here's a five-year summary, kind of a five-year look back at your property liability and auto claims, and really, you look at the eight auto claims, about $3,900 a claim, which really is not significant, eight claims over five years, really is nothing to be too terribly concerned about. You've had one liability claim, which paid out $2,800. The large property claim, of course, is the Justice Center RIF that was replaced and just finished up, I think maybe six or eight months ago, and that was the bulk of the $390,000 that's been paid out on those three property claims. And then I believe you're familiar with one of the professional employment liability claims that was maybe a year or so ago that paid out $190,000, but really, your claims history is, is really quite good, aside from, you know, including work comp, and speaks again a lot to, to the county's management of your properties. So, next slide. Here's a coverage snapshot. I didn't think we'd go through all the coverages today. I just thought I'd give you kind of a quick snapshot of what you have. You've got about $70.2 million of property and equipment on the policy today, and just a reminder, most carriers, including ICAP, will increase that anywhere from 2% to 4% a year. ICAP increases at 2% a year, so that's up 2%, that number, and with the increasing cost of materials and labor, that's not something we're having a lot of discussion with clients about today. They're very happy to see those increased insured values, if you will. You've got a $50,000 deductible on your property, and we increased that deductible about two years ago. It was $10,000, I think Supervisor Merkin, you were part of that discussion, Lisa, you might have been as well, but we took that up about, from $10,000 to $50,000, and we thought the premium savings was significant enough that it justified it. You'll see, your general liability, auto liability, all those lines of coverage are at $2 million, subject to a $10,000 deductible. You've got excess liability, which is like an umbrella, $13 million excess liability, which goes over those other $2 million coverages, some crime and flood insurance as well. And Bryce, if you go to the next slide, here's just a kind of a final synopsis, again, about 55.6 million of actual property. You've got personal property, which is really furniture and fixtures, so, you know, if you look around this room and think about all the furniture and fixtures in all of the offices and throughout all of the buildings, just under 6 million, 5.9 million, 313,000 of computers and hardware, that'd be hardware, software that is insured throughout the, throughout the county. Miscellaneous property, $7 million. That is road equipment, graders, tractors, backhoes, conservation equipment, anything that's $10,000 and over, we typically schedule, it's on a schedule, and we track that year, year by year, and update that when the renewal comes around with ICAP. And then anything that's 10,000 and under ends up on that, what's miscellaneous property unscheduled, 779,000, a lot of tools, a lot of sheriff's equipment, I think about 475,000 of sheriff's equipment, and that's what makes up the miscellaneous property, and again, 70.2 million of insured value, and we just footnote it, last year, we had about 68.6 million of insured value, so an increase largely due to that 2% increase in property value. Here's just a quick, I didn't think we'd spend time on this today, but obviously, your work comp renewal is driven by your payroll, and you'll see that his, your payroll last year was about 17.2 million. We renewed this year at 18.7, so up about 1.5 million, and that drove just a little bit of premium, but then your experience mod offset some of that premium increase, which is, which is really nice. And we go over this very closely with Alyssa, and then you're subject to an audit at the end of the year, which is typically very, very close when the audit comes in. Alyssa does a great job with that. Here's our last slide, and then I'll stop and take questions. The county did incur an increase in premiums this year. ICAP, ICAP had losses, and I'll walk you through that in a minute, across the state of Iowa, have had losses the past couple of years, and so consequently, they, they did take increase, and I'll just walk you through this. You'll see that historically, your ICAP package was 257, it was 274, and then we lowered the, new increasing deductible, that took it down to 244 when we went to the $50,000 deductible change. It inched up a little bit in 2021, and it's renewing this year at 311. Your work comp premium went up very, very little, and again, some of that was due to the increase in payroll, but again, your mod offset that a little bit, and I'll walk you through that as well. Your renewal premiums, 441 compared to 384 last year. The biggest difference in the ICAP renewal is that historically, ICAP has offered up a voucher. It's a, it's a credit, if you will, and they did remove that voucher this year. It was 24,000, just shy of 25,000 last year. When that voucher will come back, we're not certain. I think that was their attempt to, to recoup some losses, if you will, and we hope that voucher will come back in a couple of years. We used to receive a similar voucher, a similar credit from, from, on the work comp, the IMWCA, and they removed it several years ago, and it never came back, and so we'll hope that at some point this ICAP voucher comes back, but that was $25,000 that was removed across the entire state for all cities and counties, so you were not alone on that. And then here's your increases by line, and we, and that previously was Supervisor Haddens and Alyssa, Alyssa and walked through each of these increases, and Alyssa asked us that we maybe talk about what, what was ICAP targeting, what were they trying to do as they, as they underwrote the county and under other cities and counties across the state? Your general liability was only up .14%, actually, it was down .14%, and most cities and counties saw a 10% increase in general liability, so that's the bolded number in parentheses there. Your auto went up 1%, most cities and counties saw 5%, and we have other clients, by the way, with ICAP, so we saw some similar increases. I think Story County did well here. Law enforcement saw about a 20% increase, and you were up 15, public officials liability, which, which covers the three of you and, and other employees for decision-making and employment practices liability, went up 20 across the state, and you were up 11. Excess liability, you were up 1.3%, which is pretty modest, and it was up about 10. And then property, simply a function of the losses, I think ICAP has had with ratio and, and others over the years, went up 20, and you were just, just up 18%. So if you subtract the voucher, you're up about 21%. Thank my finding some interest again Supervisor Haddens asked that we provide these to you this morning, but the law enforcement liability loss ratio, you might guess, you know, they're continuing to see claims, the cities are seeing claims here, it was up, it was a loss ratio last year, 328%, excuse me, three-year loss ratio, 328%. Public officials were continuing to see claims there, not necessarily our agency, but I think others are, 360%. General liability loss ratios were 63% and 66% on property, and auto was 100%. So clearly, ICAP is experiencing losses. This county is feeling the impact of that to some extent, but we felt pretty good about the renewal, and we did, we did negotiate the best we could with the county to keep your, your renewal down. The bright spot in this, this renewal today is really your work comp. Your gross premium on, on your payroll is $464,000, and then you have $334,000 of discounts, which is just terrific. There's, remember that experience mod results in a 34% discount, and you have what's called a good experience credit, you have a large premium discount, and you have a longevity discount, which takes 334,000 away from, from that premium. So your net premium is $130,000, which is really terrific, given the amount of payroll. Just a reminder, we've looked at other work comp carries in the past. This is extremely competitive pricing on your work comp. We've also looked at other property carriers for the county in the past, and I think it was maybe a couple prior supervisors that asked us to look at that, and really, even your pricing with ICAP today is still fairly competitive compared to other carriers. So, and the last thing is, we, I think you asked us to disclose our agency fee each year, which we do. And with that, maybe I'll just, we'll go to the last slide, and I'd be happy to take questions from any one of you about this renewal.
Supervisors, any questions?
Well, I guess that it may be not, I'll ask it and answer it.
Sure, sure.
I was just wondering about the impact of the well field damage in January, if you have an idea of what that might do.
You're, you're referring to the?
The geothermal.
Oh.
The geothermal, the Justice Center. I mean, I know that that's going to be some, someone else's responsibility to pay for, but what's the impact, will there be an impact on the county?
You know, it shouldn't have much impact, particularly if the liability rests with somebody else. Now, oftentimes, carriers like ICAP will go ahead and pay that, and then they will submerge back against the other party's carrier, and so we'll, we'll certainly track that and make sure it doesn't have an impact, but it shouldn't have any impact on the renewal premiums. If it does, we'll try to advocate for that and not. But, that's a good question.
So our premium for the ICAP portion went up about 21%.
That's correct.
Even though our losses were nowhere near that, because group policy and recovery, and we're carrying other people this year, and they carry us some other year, right?
You said it a little differently than, than I probably would, but that's correct. And I'm going to tell you, the initial renewal was higher than that, and we quickly pointed out to them, you've not had, you've not really had losses. You had one employment liability claim, which we saw earlier, that paid out a couple of years ago, and you've had some property losses, but not anything you could do to, it was a, it was a rough issue, and so, so you really have not had losses to speak of, and we negotiated the best we could on your behalf, and yes, you're carrying some of the other cities and counties. And we'll hope that next year's renewal, we'll be able to see better, more competitive pricing.
That's what, that's what a group of insurance is about.
That's exactly right. There's good and bad sometimes of being a part of a pool like ICAP and.
Yeah, yeah, and the, the worker comp is just a minimal increase, so that's.
Very marginal increase, given about 1.5 million in payroll increase.
I appreciate that you put the information in to show how Story County is compared to the rest of the state.
Well, so it's an industry.
Just to see, just to see where, where we add the trends, are we kind of, kind of at, so we have a better idea of where do we need to kind of further address.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have any additional.
Let me just say thank you for the opportunity to review the renewal, and thank you for the relationship as well. We appreciate the opportunity to be involved and happy to be a part of the Story County Safety Committee and part of safety discussions here, and just really appreciate the relationships. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next we'll move on to agency reports, and it'll be a Friendship Art Homes annual report with Jennifer Ellis. There she is. Good morning, Jennifer. Oh, can you hear me yet? Probably not yet. There you go. Good morning, Jennifer.
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Oh, goodness.
A little better.
Morning, thank you for having me. I am the Executive Director, Jennifer Ellis, from Friendship Art Homes and Community Services. I'm afraid we're having technical difficulty. Can you hear me? Okay, great. Friendship Art, for those of you who might not be familiar, celebrates the uniqueness of adults with intellectual disabilities. We help our core members be successful by providing homes and community services, really focus on faith, family, and friendship. We currently have six homes in Story County, all in Ames at this time, and recently purchased our seventh home, which will be opening later this summer, and I'll talk a little more about that in a minute. We also have about 15 to 17 individuals who are a part of our supported community living program, either still at home with family or living in their own apartments, and we serve them on an hourly basis rather than 24/7 like we do in our homes. 2020, like for everyone else, was, was really affected by COVID-19, and that, of course, was a focus for us. In March, our day hab program was forced to close, and we have yet to reopen that. When we closed in March, we were serving about 40 individuals through that program, which really focuses on community inclusion and volunteering and getting our core members very involved in the community and events that are happening. But as COVID hit, and all of those things kind of shut down, our day hab program was forced to as well. We spent the majority of, of 2020 really focusing on keeping our staff and our core members healthy. I'm very happy to report, we did not have any positive cases of COVID-19 in any of our homes, and a lot of long-term support congregate living settings across the state experienced that. So we were blessed and fortunate that the strategies we used to try to keep people safe worked. We had only about three or four staff that actually tested positive. We were able to pull them out and quarantine and keep that from spreading in all of our homes, so while it was difficult and we had to restrict visitors, and our core members and their families certainly felt that strain, we were able to keep people healthy. We were a part of the CVS vaccine program, and so we were able to get all of our core members, and about, we had about an 85% participation rate by staff in January and February when we got the Pfizer vaccine, and since then, I'm happy to report that most of our staff have gotten vaccinated. We have very few that haven't. So at this point, we are starting to open back up. We've been able to get our core members involved in some community activities. We moved all of our day hab staff into our homes, because with people being home 24/7, we really needed more staff there, so we didn't have to lay any of our staff off. We were able to put them in shifts in our homes and, and keep them busy that way, and now, as we've started to open back up, we're utilizing our residential staff to try to get our core members back out and about in the community a bit more. We haven't decided on a start date for that day hab program. We're kind of piloting some different things. Certainly, we know there's a need out there. We have a lot of core members who weren't involved in our residential programs that participated in our day hab program, so we want to figure out how to get back to meeting that need, but we're doing it slowly and hopefully thoughtfully so that we can be successful and again, keep people healthy and safe. Going back to the seventh home that I mentioned earlier that we just purchased, we're actually piloting a new program there. Like everyone else across the state, we're experiencing a workforce shortage, and so while there's need out there, and we want to continue to expand and meet that need, we have to figure out how to do it with less staff. And so we're partnering with a program called Night Owl Support Systems, and we'll be using technology to help staff that home overnight, and then we'll provide the in-person staff during the day. So there's sensors on the windows and the ring doorbell that can kind of show who's at the front door. There's a two-way panel, so it's similar to a call button where they can push that, and they'll get another person on the other end that can answer questions for them, so that will help support them overnight, and then our staff will come in during the day and work on all of the typical skills that we work on in our other homes as far as cleaning and shopping and healthy eating and cooking, all of those kinds of things. So it's sort of a new program for us. It's a little bit of a hybrid between the 24/7 support that we do in our current homes and the individualized hourly support that we do in our SCL program. So we're excited for that. We have two young ladies that are already going to be moving into that home, and we're still looking for another one to two individuals that could move in there. It's a four-person home at this point. So obviously, like I said, the challenges were in 2020 really focused on the pandemic and kind of mitigating that. We had three individuals who moved out of our homes because their family wasn't able to visit, so that resulted in a significant revenue loss, but we were able to offset that by getting the PPP loan. We were able to do hazard pay for several months for our staff that had to come into the homes and, and be a little bit more exposed, so that was good. Financially, we weathered it better than some, so I think we were fortunate in that way, and is really a testament to our accounting department and, and the work that they did to make sure we had those PPP loans and some of that CARES Act dollars utilized the best that we could. And like I said, we're starting to see the other side of that. We just had our 5K on the fourth this year, Sunday. We were so happy to be back in person out of Ada Haight, and it was an absolutely beautiful day, and almost felt normal again. We had the best turnout we've had in years, so it was nice to be out there, have our core members out there, have our supporters be back in person and, and seeing all of them. And we have the George Niang Golf Outing will be happening on July 23rd, which is going to be our largest fundraiser of the year. George has partnered with a charity for the past five years and selected Friendship Art in 2020, and we had to delay that because of the pandemic, so we're excited that we're going to be able to do it this year and are expecting a good turnout, and hopefully the weather will cooperate like it did Sunday, and we'll be able to get out there with George Niang and several other basketball players and athletes. We're excited for that. So we have a goal of raising about $50,000, which, like I said, would be our largest fundraiser. We're primarily funded by Medicaid, the HCBS ID waiver, but we do have to fundraise for any new programs that we're starting, any capital projects, building homes, buying homes, all of that, we have to fundraise. So the 5K and the George Niang Golf Outing and some of those fundraisers are very important, actually vital to the services that we do if we want to continue to expand and grow. And there's a need. We have waiting lists on all of our programs. I think we're sitting around 35 on our waiting list to get into one of our homes. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of openings, but unfortunately, that means people can sit on our waiting list for a really long time, and it usually takes us, opening a new home, to be able to meet that additional need, so those fundraisers are important, and we continue to really be thankful for the support that we get from our donors and the community. I think that kind of wraps up my report. I guess I'll open it up, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer those.
Okay, thank you. Supervisors, any questions?
Well, I have a couple about the Night Owl Support Systems. I've been Googling it and looking at some information about this, and I just wondered, is, if there's a call made, does it go to a call center, or does it go to your staff or your staff on call if there's a problem?
So it's kind of both. They can push a button, and those, there's a two-way, there's a panel that's a two-way speaker, so the core member can say, hey, I'm, I'm having trouble with this, and then the Night Owl has a call center, and their call staff are actually trained DSPs, just like our staff, so they understand the questions that they're going to get, they understand how to talk through basic issues with our core members. If they're not able to resolve that, then there's a, basically a tree that they'll call, it'll start with our on-call staff, and then there's a couple of other numbers, so eventually, they'll be able to get one of our staff if that's needed.
And then will you, anytime a call would go to the Night Owl, would you get some kind of a follow-up report so you can be assessing the effectiveness of the service?
Yep, absolutely. So they can send us daily, weekly, or monthly reports, and they, they will report on any time a sensor goes off, any time that call button is used, any time any of their equipment goes off, it will make a note on that report, and then we can assess, you know, if we need more support in a specific area or at a specific time. The system can stay on 24/7 if we want it to, and then, you know, if somebody's leaving for work, it can tell us that they're leaving for work or what time they got home. They can do wake-up calls, they can do check-in when you get home from work calls, so it's really comprehensive and can meet the needs of each individual living there.
Successful, might you be looking at replicating it in other homes, or are you doing it in this home because of, or would you be looking more specifically at what the individual's needs are in all of the homes?
So I've actually been working on this for a couple of years with a group of parents that we thought it could be successful with, and that's how it started, this specific home started, and I have several others that are interested. They would be males, so we are contemplating if this works well, starting a male home and doing it. It, it does depend on the individuals, you know, they need to be independent enough that they could be safe overnight and be able to be taught how to use that call system, so it won't work for everyone. The 24, 24/7 care is definitely needed for a lot of our individuals, but there are some that, that kind of fall between the two programs that we had, and this is a really good option for them.
Yeah, thank you.
Jennifer, thank you for your presentation. You know, full disclosure, I have an adult young man for Friendship Art, and I have to say, yes, this past year was very hard with the limitations of interactions with parents, but I can also say, from a parent's perspective, the fact that you had zero paces warms my heart. So, good job. Thank you.
Well, we really do thank our parents and our guardians and the family, because I know it was difficult not to be able to visit, and it took cooperation from everybody, it took communication from everybody, but ultimately, it worked. took communication from everybody but ultimately it worked and so it's you know I think it it's a kudos to all of us the parents the guardians the staff everybody we really had to work together to keep everybody safe and we did.
Yeah, we did and I will say my son is incredibly proficient with FaceTime and is starting to understand Zoom as well a little bit so that he can talk with other families so he's now my go-to person if I'm having issues with my my technology.
I understand I have to go to some of our core members for that stuff as well they really got into the technology this past year.
Thank you so much for your time Jennifer.
Thank you very much for letting me present.
Next we'll move on we have consideration of minutes. It's been moved and seconded Basil.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Headens. Aye. Next for consideration of personnel actions I do have an amendment to add here we to add Mark Handsecker effective seven twelve twenty twenty-one under equipment operator one at twenty dollars and twenty-three cents an hour.
I move approval of personnel actions as listed and amended.
Second. It's been moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Headens. Aye. Next we have consideration of claims. With the approval of claims is presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded Basil.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Headens. Aye. Next consent agenda anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
No. Move approval of consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Headens. Aye. We have the next public hearing item.
Davis is the next item. Show up.
Oh, okay on there okay so next we are to additional items it's the discussion and consideration of agreement between Story County and the city of Slater and Ballard for the Trailside Development Urban Renewal Area. I believe Jennifer Davies is. Yeah, I see her up there she's still muted. Does she need to unmute Jennifer can you I'm not sure can you hear us can you unmute your your phone or your Zoom hello? Morning Jennifer.
Hello.
Morning.
Morning.
Do you want to talk to us a little bit about we've got the Trailside Development European Extension Agreement?
Sure.
Add us.
Um, sure what what the city normally does is a ten-year agreement for TIF rebates for developers and when this developer started talking about this development a couple of years ago they were looking at about one point three million in expenses for all of the infrastructure they are up to nine point one point nine million for the estimates and to best of our estimates obviously estimates the expected rebates over ten years is only going to be about five hundred thousand so we are we our attorney tip attorney suggested that we request a five-year extension to that which would get them more to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in rebates over fifteen years instead of ten obviously with that request we have to have your the county's consent and the school board's consent so that's what we're requesting.
And have you heard I don't know have you heard anything from the schools yet?
They are considering it at their next meeting which is July twelfth.
The code section here four oh three point two two states that Division of Revenue should not be allowed for the purpose of providing or aiding in the provision of public improvements related to housing and residential development unless the municipality assures that the project will include assistance for low and moderate income family housing.
Yes.
Back to this TIF.
Yes, our development agreement does include a lot of low to moderate income faucet to that we have to take fifty percent approximately fifty percent of the of the TIP dollars and put towards lot of low to moderate income unless the developer developer can prove that some of the homes meet that low to moderate income aspect.
I'm not sure. Have we seen the development agreement?
I haven't seen it.
The agreement itself of the developer we haven't seen. I just wondered because there was nothing in this agreement that we were being asked to sign that gave that assurance.
I can certainly forward you a copy of the of the developer agreement the current the current developers agreement.
My second question and Jennifer I don't know if this is to you does this have to be done now I see that the the rationale is that costs are higher because of I assume the pandemic that currently they're higher but I also know that I've read and heard lately that costs are going down I didn't see anything that said you had to extend now can you could you in fact extend later when you had more of a when you really knew what your costs were?
We we could extend later yes that is an option however the developer is wanting to sign contracts and start work with estimates that they already have in hand which is what we have at the one point nine million in in infrastructure costs. I'm sorry?
And is the developer going out for bids on this project?
They already have their estimates they they can they can sign contracts off of estimates from contractors they don't have to they don't have to go through a bid process.
Do any of the staff present know whether the county has agreed to a five-year extension before? Not to your knowledge anybody else here I see heads shaking back and forth rather than nodding up and down so.
I mean we want to review these because it's inside the city.
Pardon?
I'm not aware of this probably because it's inside the city.
Okay.
I heard Nevada. You heard I'm sorry what? Nevada.
The the county approved the extension?
No.
County did not approve the extension.
I no I just heard that the city of Nevada has eight I don't know who they have or maybe theirs is a fifteen year. A project probably within the city probably.
Um. So what I'm what I'm think I'm hearing is is okay they they've got bid estimates of one point nine million but those are estimates and prices of materials are coming down right now so.
But if they sign contracts with their contractors it's for whatever the price they've already quoted them.
And Jennifer could you maybe you know this I'm not sure but you if I have my notes here you said the expected rebates were to be around five hundred thousand if you went to a did you say you went to a fifteen year?
No, that's for the just the ten year would be around five hundred thousand. The increase in costs their their original estimates were one point three and now it's at one point nine so that's why we're requesting perhaps they know that this is an investment on their side as well but they didn't think it was going to be quite that much of an investment when this project started. We're we're figuring that the additional five years would get them another two hundred and fifty thousand so of the of the one point nine million that they would be investing they would only recoup seven hundred and fifty thousand and obviously our development agreement has a limit on of how much they will will receive in total and like I said I can forward that to your county attorney for review if you would like.
Simply because of what the code section says the municipality assures the project will include assistance I really think we should see that.
Sure, absolutely absolutely not a problem.
Is that something you'd like to see before a motion is made or have it continued or an approval contingent on on what that says I'm I would like to see it for. Supervisor Merkin or county attorney have any input on that?
There's another there'll be another meeting next week when we discuss this prior to the school board meeting in July.
Well, there I think there's the twelfth is a Monday so ours would be next week would be the thirteenth.
But if we it wouldn't be if we reschedule this onto next week's agenda we really wouldn't be holding up a lot of holding this up because it would be the day after the school board meets I think we should reschedule that and just just so we've done what we should do to look at this issue. I do have I do also have some concerns I guess I should burn out which is um this is something that can be done for a TIF of any community under fifteen thousand all of our cities in Story County except one are under fifteen thousand might look at it and say this isn't much of a of a you know could be this couldn't be very much of an impact but if this were to become a trend or to become an expectation it could be a very large impact so I think we need to look at it very carefully it's private developer who's getting a TIF dollars and I guess I just think we should it should be more than just somebody's asking that for I think I think we need to deliberate about it.
I would agree on what you said and I appreciated all the questions that you asked supervisor working on this certainly I've looked at this but appreciate the detail that you went into yeah I'd like to see the contract I am a little bit concerned as to are we setting something up that is going to cause a greater impact and would like a little bit more time especially once seeing that additional information would be helpful. So would there be I'm not sure would we need a motion or would it be just be that some consensus that we table this and put it on the agenda for next Tuesday not to table just we need a motion?
Uh, no.
You can just say that. Okay that we would just like to have this put on the agenda for next Tuesday the thirteenth but in the meantime to receive that information so that our county attorney's office can review that does that can you can you email that to us Jennifer?
Yes, I'll email it yet this morning.
Okay, why don't we do that and then we can place this on the agenda for next Tuesday?
That sounds good, sounds good.
Thank you. All right, next we're moving on to discussion and consideration of resolution twenty-two dash oh four the more residential parcel subdivision.
just north of Maxwell. And this is made by Hertz Real Estate on behalf of the property owner it is entirely in the A1 agricultural district as required by our code for residential parcel subdivision applications and it actually covers six parcels that are currently under same ownership. Next slide please so on the map that yellow star is the location you can see it's just north of Maxwell the next slide so the subject properties are highlighted outlined in yellow and we have the county zoning layer turned on as well so everything highlighted in yellow is in the A1 zoning district and then just south of the proposed residential parcel subdivision there are some parcels in the AR the agricultural residential zoning district as well as the R1 zoning district but there are a total of six here in the northwest corner there's an existing farmstead with a home and then the other parcels do not have any dwellings on them at this time next slide please so the proposed division I was hoping it would show up better but I don't think it is on the screen there is a substantial amount of floodplain on these six parcels the plat has it shaded it's not showing up very well but it covers a substantial enough portion of lot one outlot A and lot two I'll talk about that in a second but the proposed division going west to east there's lot one on the western portion that would be two point eight net acres that contains a dwelling the farmstead that I mentioned as well as some accessory structures for farm equipment there's a proposed outlot A south into the east of There's a proposed Outlot A, south and to the east of Lot 1, a total of 50.4 net acres. For residential parcel subdivisions, outlots are not considered buildable. So we would not allow any zoning permits to be issued for Outlot A. And then moving all the way to the east, there's a bridge there in the road, 295th Street kind of comes down on the east and north of 295th Street is Lot 2, proposed Lot 2. That's a total of 33.91 net acres. All of that is in pasture at this time. It has a stream easement on it because it borders the, I believe it's West Indian Creek. Yes, it borders that. So there is a 30-foot stream easement on Lot 2 and then a 60-foot stream easement as we move down to the outlot. It is in pasture right now. The potential buyer for that lot doesn't have current homes to build a dwelling there, but perhaps down, down the road in the future they may. So as of right now, it will remain in pasture recreation land. And then, next slide, please. So surrounding land use, I mentioned, you know, the A1 and the AR zoning districts, there's a total of 55 parcels within a quarter mile of these six parcels. 19 of those contain a single-family dwelling. And only, see, only six meet our 35 acre requirement to build a single-family home without needing some exception to the A1 zoning district regulations. Next slide, please. So these are our regulations from 80, chapter 87. If you have questions about these, I can answer them. But we, as, I'll get to it in a moment, we found that the subdivision met all of these regulations, all of these standards. Next slide. And comments from the, the public in the city. We mailed notices on June 28th to surrounding property owners within a quarter mile. We have not received any comments as of today, but on the Zoom call, it looked like there may be a couple individuals who are neighboring property owners who might have questions or comments when I'm finished. The city of Maxwell is located within two miles per our regulations. We forwarded them the application materials for the subdivision. They passed a resolution during a June 7th meeting waiving their right to review it. And they also signed an affidavit because they noted after they passed that resolution, the legal description on it included scribbler's errors as submitted by the surveyor. So there's also an affidavit included with the resolution, corrected legal description. Next slide, please. So our analysis, as I mentioned, we found that it met all of our regulations from chapter 87 of the ordinance. There are plans to develop Lot 2 in the future. An access point will need to be created in order for that to be done. Access already exists for Lot 1. As I mentioned, there are 19 single-family homes within a quarter mile of this proposed subdivision. And I should mention as well, I know that there's sometimes concerns about residential parcel subdivisions creating sprawl or allowing, you know, homes to be built on farmland where perhaps it's not desirable. In this case, Lot 2 was already, the area where Lot 2 is, the proposed Lot 2, was already considered buildable. It's a legal lot of record and there are additional woodlots east of that. So this subdivision, it actually takes legal lot of records out of the equation for being buildable. Actually reduces the number of buildable lots in this area to just two, whereas I believe it would have been around four previously. So, so that's something you can take into, take into consideration for the analysis as well. Additional divisions of lots created through the subdivision process are not permitted. I mentioned the floodplain on the subdivision on all those parcels. We reached out to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, I believe on June 2nd, requesting the, like, the base flood elevation data be determined for that area of the floodplain because it has not yet been. Due to, you know, a backlog of requests that they have, that base flood elevation data could not be determined in a timely fashion. So we've put a condition on approval of the subdivision plat that no zoning permits be allowed to be issued for Lot 2 or Lot 1. And so that BFE data is made available to us. If you go to the next slide. So that's, yeah, conditions on approval. These notes were put on the subdivision plat itself. So any potential buyers will have that information available to them that they need to speak with the planning and development office about that base flood elevation data that we will not issue a zoning permit until we have that, hopefully within the next few months. Next slide. Our recommendation would be to approve resolution 22-04 with the conditions that I just mentioned. Other alternatives would be to approve the resolution as submitted by the applicant or to deny the resolution as it was submitted or to, oh, it looks like there's a typo on there. I believe you can remand it back to us and we can ask the applicant to address any questions that you have. Sorry about that typo. Any questions on this? Can there be questions from, from people on Zoom?
So Lot 1 has an existing farmstead?
Yes.
And nothing else could be, that can't be subdivided further?
No, it would not. Not after this process, no.
And then Lot 2, how many houses could be built on?
Just one.
Just one?
Yep.
Okay, so why are they pursuing putting all of these parcels into this outlot?
That outlot is pretty much covered by floodplain. I'm not sure, it'd be very difficult to get a zoning permit for anything on that particular parcel.
Kind of a cleanup.
Yeah. And so I believe they've got some row crop there and some pasture area that will remain to be farmed.
Yeah, well, it's on the, the plat that's on the agenda shows a good share of this. It shows up a lot more that most of this is floodplain. That's why it was, yeah. That's, that's all I have.
So in the housing study, wasn't it recommended that we try to get more houses on land rather than limit the number of houses? Is this?
Yeah.
Or buildable lots, not houses?
Yeah. I think since this is in the unincorporated area, I don't know how much sense high density makes in this area because there isn't, you know, sewer, water. It's just going to be deceptive. It's right outside of Iowa Center. So, you know, I think one acre lot size is just about what we have. Is a pretty good density to maintain the rural character, whereas we might see the more density inside of cities. Do you really need to add to that?
No.
Okay.
Did you look at that study?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. That's what the housing study says, especially for cities. But we just want to be careful not to get too dense.
I did have another question. You said that a good share of Lot 2 is in pasture right now?
Yes.
So we're losing some, are they going to keep using it as pasture?
I'm not sure. The area that's in the floodplain, they may, since they couldn't, it'd be difficult to have a permit issued to build anything in that area. There's only a very small area where they could build. But what they'll do with the rest of the land, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
How many acres is Lot 2?
I think it's 33.91 net acres.
So that half of that's in the floodplain. So there's about 16 acres, say, not in floodplain that's currently pasture. We will be lost. I, I hate to see year round. And also there's not that much pasture land that's still available in Story County.
Yeah. No, we, we understand those concerns. And looked at it more from a, a perspective of, there's some interesting topography on a lot of those lots that would render them, you know, not buildable, not, not buildable, not that we wouldn't, couldn't issue a zoning permit in that, you know, topographically, building a house out there would be really disruptive to natural resources and floodplain. And this just seemed like a good cleanup of the area, especially, I think, one of the factors that went into this too was one of the quarter, quarter sections where the farmstead is actually includes land north of the roadway currently. And they really didn't want to, the buyer didn't want to own land north of the roadway adjacent to Lot 2. So to do that reconfiguration, a subdivision plat was required.
Any additional questions? Is there a motion? I've moved approval of resolution 22-04 with the recommended conditions that the base flood elevation data be received first.
I second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Very men. Supervisor?
Hi.
Markin?
I'm Kevin's aide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next going on, looks like we have departmental reports.
That's me. I think there's a PowerPoint on the agenda though. Thanks. Okay. So this is our second quarterly report. The first slide, if you'll remember from our first quarter report, we had a lot of zoning permits issued the first quarter and I was wanting to track that to see what was going on. And I think we had a request to break the data down a little bit more to get to the bottom of what was happening. So this quarter, we've seen a drop, which kind of makes up for the increase we saw. Given me a little bit of less heartburn about what's happening. And interestingly, I know we already talked about lumber prices a little bit today. They have been falling. I didn't know how long it would take for us to see them fall on a local level. We did, we actually did an inspection for a new house that's going on north of Ames on Friday. And I was talking to the contractor and they said they have seen, you know, just the price of two-by-fours drop just in the last week. So that's something to keep in mind that we are starting to see, you know, construction prices fall. But they're still pretty high. Especially, you know, we haven't, last year, we see usually over 15 dwellings during this quarter. We only saw 10 this year. The other part of that is subdivisions like Cameron Estates are starting to get pretty full. And then the average valuation of a dwelling was up to around 300,000, which is pretty high. So for permits we issued for new dwellings, we really didn't have a lot of, sometimes we see manufactured or modular home permits or sometimes folks put a dwelling unit in a pole barn, which is, you know, lower cost housing options. And we really didn't see any of those this quarter. So that's why that's so high. Or even sometimes we have, you know, mobile homes placed in one of our manufactured housing communities back driven. And we didn't see that this quarter. If we go to the next slide, we tried to break down the permits by type. We had three solar permits for, you know, folks putting solar on their homes, which is great. We've been seeing more of those. So I'm planning on keeping track in how many of those we see if we get in, you know, wind energy systems will track those too for residences. We did see 10 dwellings and mostly we just see detached garages and pole barns, put up accessory buildings. So 18, that was the most of it. And some porches additions. Any questions so far on our numbers or what we can see in? Okay.
I guess if you have one question, are you seeing them more in, oh, actually it's in your map, your next slide.
Yeah, the next slide.
You're going to, you're going to answer my question.
We see a lot north of Ames. We did see a new house actually go in south of Ames, which was interesting. It was, and they replaced a farmstead. So that's that little dot right off of Dartmoor. Let's see. There was some activity near Story City as well. I think those were mainly accessory structure permits. And then, you know, it is, once we get into eastern Story County, pretty dispersed. So I, I would say there is a cluster north of Ames development. Development cases, we were lower than usual. But I would say a lot of the ones we had were pretty complex. So we had, you know, a site plan for storage units on Brant Lamar's property, for instance, and for bio annexation was another one that took a lot of staff resources. If you'll go to the next slide. Something we've really seen a lot of our conceptual review meetings. So when somebody wants to do a conditional use permit or a subdivision or rezoning, they have to attend conceptual review first with us and other county departments to talk through what the process would be. And we have seen a lot of those this quarter, more than usual, nine. We have another one this Thursday. I think we've usually seen the fourth bullet point, three or five. And again, we've seen nine. So while we haven't seen a lot of development cases come through, there's certainly a lot of interest still. We've gotten, you know, several inquiries about how, what I rezon this property or, you know, other types of conditional use permits. You know, residential treatment facilities, daycare facilities, mineral extraction. So we, we've seen a lot of interest still. They just haven't come through as formal submittals yet. Code enforcement, I have been kind of tracking with our planners. Since there was, I think, a question at one point about, you know, a code enforcement position with cities. So we've been trying to track that better with our, within our own department. We do have one current home business that's in violation that we are working with for outdoor storage. Their deadline is coming up here in the next month to remove that storage. We did have an outstanding issue that we followed up on with somebody's permit that had expired, but the, the structure wasn't done. It was still just construction stuff everywhere on the property. And then we are looking into a potential, we call them illegal junkyards, but folks that have, you know, appliances on their property or, you know, a couple junk vehicles. We did get one complaint in. So those take, you know, an hour or two each, I'd say, of work this quarter, which isn't actually a whole lot. But we've just been tracking those better to kind of get a better idea of staff resources. And we take, again, these are on a complaint basis. So it's folks that have called in and said, hey, my neighbor's got, you know, this going on or I noticed. So we are also working on, and we will talk about this on the work program update, our chapter updates to the entire code. And we've brought several of the more substantial chapters to Planning and Zoning Commission and they haven't taken action, but we've just been having informal discussions. They've got some really good ideas. We just did, brought our home business to this chapter, to Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm really excited about some of the changes that we're going to be making and some of the input we got. Yeah, so we will be bringing chapter 32, which is addressing, to you all. Probably soon, in the next month or two. That's probably the first chapter we'll bring to work supervisors. And then I'm thinking we'll get those wrapped up by the fall, all of the rest of the amendments. So that does bring me to the work program slide. So the Ames Urban Fringe Plan Amendment is the first item I wanted to talk to you all about. So Ames is going to initiate this, this summer and have a meeting with us and the city of Gilbert when they're starting to wrap up their 2040 plan some more. It sounds like council will be taking action in a draft in August, early August, end of July, and then they will seek more public input prior to final approval. So when I see that on an agenda, I'll try to let you all know.
So I talked to the mayor of Kelly some time back and he indicated to me verbally that they were interested in being involved in the urban fringe. I wonder if you could pass that on?
Yep, I can.
And you and I were also going to talk to Boone County Supervisors once and I just remembered that, that they said they were
Interested.
They, they, they wanted to have a presentation, but then they, I think some, some things derailed some of those. So I might call them back, see if they would still like to come over and talk about the urban fringe.
Yeah. And I think, you know, when I talked to Ames, the idea was kind of a kickoff meeting to the amendment process so we could invite those other entities as well that want to join.
Yeah, I think that would be good to invite both of them. Just invite both of them and then we can, if they're interested, look at changing the 2018.
And I, you know, I think we thought this would happen much sooner because the 2040 plan is really what they because the 2040 plan is really what they want to complete before we look at amending the fringe plan, since there are future growth scenarios for Ames in the 2040 plan. And so I, I do think it's still smart to kind of delay it until we have a better concept of what's going to be approved for the 2040 plan, and that's what Ames is doing. Yeah, it sounds like fall final approval at this point. But, yeah, but that council will be taking action on a draft at the end of the month. Good. Yeah, so. The other item is the construction demolition landfill siting. I know I talked to you all a couple weeks ago about that, and we sent out a letter to property owners. Review of the land development regulations, we're almost through that. We just really need to do two more chapters, and then some public outreach. So I'm thinking we'll get that done by fall. And we were hoping for July. Similarly, natural resources area, we just need to do the outreach on our natural resources area mapping and our new ordinance. And that'll hopefully happen by fall. We've, we've written the ordinance, we've done the maps, it's just a matter of coming up with a public outreach plan, getting in front of the other county departments at this point. Public outreach toolkit, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped. Minimum levels of service is another one that we are going to start when we finish the natural resources area mapping. So minimum levels of service would be things like, can I build a house off a Level B road? Adapting some sort of standard for, you know, what type of road makes that parcel buildable? Or, you know, the density of a, of a development related to how close you are to a city and availability of, you know, city water in the future, that kind of thing. So we're, I think we can still get that done by the end of the year. It's just, I want to get through the land development regulation chapter updates before we start work on that. And then the public outreach toolkit, I already talked about conservation design standards with the natural resources mapping, if you're following down the list with me. We're going to pilot that with an upcoming conditional use permit where we have a workshop potentially even on the property with surrounding property owners before they make a submittal to get feedback. We'll see how that goes. But I'm excited to see if it works and is, has, you know, it's a better feedback opportunity from the public rather than just a public meeting. And we also took our conditional use permit notification distances to our board of adjustment, since they're the ones that approve conditional use permits and said, hey, do you think this, this is an adequate distance for notification? Here's what other counties do, and got some feedback from them. So you'll see that as part of our chapter amendments as well. And then accessory dwelling units, this was in the housing study. And we are hoping to start that in October after we finish some of these other items. But I've got a list of, we get calls once a week, I'd say, on, can I put another dwelling unit on the property for my son or my, you know, my parents or my in-laws? So I've got a list going of people that want to be updated about when this amendment starts. So that should have a good public outreach component to it. Questions? We've also been working on the broadband study with supervisor Merkin. Not in the work program, but a longer-range planning item. We're going to have a meeting with providers at the end of the week about some empower or allow funds. Yeah.
I guess one question I have, so the construction demolition, the letter sent, was it just recently? I didn't hear, so it was just recently sent?
Just recently.
So you haven't gotten any feedback yet?
Not yet, yeah, just recently.
So to back up a little bit, you said some of the permits you get are for people building residence inside a shed or a barn? So would that fall under permit for a single-family dwelling or permit for detached garage?
I'd put it under single-family dwelling, and I have been, yeah.
Yep.
Those are pretty popular.
Yeah, yeah, I bet they are.
Especially for folks that have RVs, and then they can park their RV in the other half and don't have to be there, you know, half of the year, so.
Any other questions, supervisor Merkin?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. For all the information. Other reports, upcoming agenda items will have this later would be an upcoming agenda item. Now is the time for public forum, oh, I'm sorry, I guess I should ask if either of you had any upcoming agenda items, I apologize.
It depends on what comes out of our broadband meeting later this week.
Okay.
I do have something for you next week.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay, apologize for, let's go into that. So next we'll move on to public forum number two. This is comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comments, please either click star nine if you're on Zoom or use the raise hand function, or if you're in the public meeting, or you can come forward. I'll give it a few more seconds just because I know sometimes Zoom, Zoom to unclip. I'm not seeing any, so I will close public forum number two. Supervisors, any updates on meetings or announcements at this particular time?
Well, we've got some interesting topics coming up later this week. Tomorrow, we have a meeting with potentially some landowners on water quality projects and drainage districts, tile, drainage district tile, what is that they're called? That's going to be here tomorrow morning. And broadband meeting on Thursday with our providers here in Story County, and then Friday, there's a webinar with our, the Greater Des Moines Partnership, the study we're doing. It's on the immediate opportunities for broadband funding. So that's Friday afternoon. So that's why I said, you know, depending on how all that goes, you know, maybe there will be something for next Tuesday's agenda. In which case, I might have to get it on first thing Monday. Very first thing. Just warning everybody. But that, that's, you know, there's some interesting things coming on.
For me, I've got some, I'm doing some interviews for the Alternatives, Care Formator position, Transportation Collaboration meeting. And then we've got, I, I'm going to be attending the community conversations on Thursday, United Way. That's on it this week. And then, well, Saturday is the Colo Crossroads and the Restoration Dedication. Yeah, I have that on my calendar. I also have, with our Thursdays, I have our, let's see, no, we don't have our navel stuff this week. It's next week, so I still have that on my calendar. I have the AEDC meeting at seven AM on Friday. And then I do have on our calendar that we've got our, it looks like we're doing a rest plan meeting. Is it on Monday? No, that, sorry, that is a meeting I am doing with, I have a meeting with Nevada, and then I have a meeting that afternoon on Monday with Huxley. Yeah, I'm sorry, I do too, that, Monday, yeah.
You're meeting with Huxley Monday? That's my.
What, what time are you meeting with them?
One o'clock, two o'clock.
Three o'clock. So.
Okay. You're on the way out.
Yeah. All right. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five one C?
I move it going closed session.
Second. Been moved in second, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Okay, hold on a second. So you're ready to fill in yet? All right. I move adjourned. Second. They moved in second, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye, we are adjourned.